The Lord has made salvation known, His justice revealed to all. Remembered His kindness, His faithfulness to Israel. All who went in earth have seen the power of God. All who went in earth have seen the power of God. All on the ends of the earth pursue salvation by our God. Joyfully sing out to all who mourn, break forth in song. All on the ends of the earth have seen the power of God. All on the ends of the earth have seen the power of God. Sing to the Lord with harp and song and trumpet and with horn, singing your joy before the King, the King our Lord. All on the ends of the earth have seen the power of God. All on the ends of the earth have seen the power of God.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, peace be with you.
And with your Spirit.
My brothers and sisters, what a great moment for us to come together here this morning on this feast of the exaltation of the cross. On the day we come together to give thanks to God for the work of the commissions, to present the results of so many days and hours of hard work, and to show how we can together continue building our church. So with this spirit of gratitude, faith, and trust in God's continued presence and guidance to our work and our mission, that we prepare ourselves to celebrate the sacred mysteries.
Lord Jesus, you were sent to heal the contrite of heart. Lord, have mercy.
Lord, have mercy.
Lord Jesus, you came to call sinners. Christ have mercy.
Christ have mercy.
Lord Jesus, you are seated at the right hand of the Father to intercede for us. Lord, have mercy.
Lord, have mercy. May Almighty God have mercy on us. Forgive us our sins and bring us to everlasting life.
Amen.
Lord God in the highest and on earth, peace to people of goodwill. You we bless, you we adore, you we glorify, you we give you thanks for your great glory. Lord God, heavenly King, oh God, oh mighty Father, glory to God in the highest, on earth, peace to people of goodwill. I, the only begotten Son, Lord God, lamb of God, son of the Father, you take away the sins of the world. Have mercy on us. Take away the sins of the world. Receive our prayers. At the right hand of the Father, have mercy on us. God in the highest and on earth, peace to people of goodwill. You are Lord. The Holy One, you alone are the Lord, alone are the Most High, Jesus Christ, with the Holy Spirit in the glory of God, the Father. Amen, amen. Glory to God in the highest, on earth, peace to people of goodwill.
Let us pray. Oh God, who willed that your only begotten Son should undergo the cross to save the human race, grant, we pray, that we who have known his mystery on earth may merit the grace of his redemption in heaven through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever.
Amen.
A reading from the Book of Numbers. With their patience worn out by the journey, the people complained against God and Moses. Why have you brought us up from Egypt to die in this desert where there is no food or water? We are disgusted with this wretched food. In punishment, the Lord sent among the people seraph serpents, which bit the people so that many of them died. Then the people came to Moses and said, "We have sinned in complaining against the Lord and you. Pray the Lord to take the serpents from us." So Moses prayed for the people, and the Lord said to Moses, "Make a seraph and mount it on a pole; and if anyone who has been bitten looks at it, they will live." Moses accordingly made a bronze serpent and mounted it on a pole. And whenever anyone who had been bitten by a serpent looked at the bronze serpent, he lived. The word of the Lord.
Thanks be to God.
Our sponsorial song is located on the program. Psalm 100, "The Hares' Beak." We are his people. We are his people. We are his people, the sheep of his flock. We are his people. We are his people. We are his people, the sheep of his flock. Sing joyfully unto the Lord all your prayers. Serve the Lord with kindness. We walk here with joyful talk. We are his people. We are his people. We are his people, the sheep of his flock. Oh, that the Lord is God. He made us His people. We are his people, lucky tales. We are his people. We are his people. We are his people, the sheep of his flock. Oh, that the Lord is God. His kindness endures forever, and His faithfulness to all generations. We are his people. We are his people. We are his people, the sheep of his flock. We are his people. We are his people. We are his people, the sheep of his flock.
A reading from the letter of St. Paul to the Philippians. Brothers and sisters, Christ Jesus, though he was in the form of God, did not regard equality with God something to be grasped. Rather, he emptied himself, taking the form of a slave coming in human likeness and found human in appearance. He humbled himself, becoming obedient to death, even death on a cross. Because of this, God greatly exalted him and bestowed on him the name that is above every name, that at the name of Jesus every knee should bend of those in heaven and on earth and under the earth, and every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father. The word of the Lord.
Thanks be to God.
Alleluia, alleluia.
May the Lord have a blessed future to all his children, Father, and the Holy Spirit be with them.
The Lord is good. Though the Lord knows no end, all that is we are saved. God's love has no end.
The Lord be with you.
And with your Spirit.
A reading from the Holy Gospel according to John.
Glory to you, oh Lord.
Jesus said to Nicodemus, "No one has gone up to heaven except the one who has come down from heaven, the Son of Man. And just as Moses lifted up the serpent in the desert, so must the Son of Man be lifted up, so that everyone who believes in him may have eternal life. For God so loved the world that he gave his only Son, so he who believes in him might not perish, but might have eternal life. For God did not send his Son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world might be saved through him." The Gospel of the Lord.
Praise to you, Lord Jesus Christ.
Bishop Tocunha, on September 26, 2015, at the World Meeting of Families in Philadelphia, Pope Francis said in his homily, "We know that the future of the Church in a rapidly changing society will call, and even now, calls for a much more active engagement on the part of the laity." When he preached those words, Bishop Tocunha, you were celebrating your first year as bishop of our diocese. And here we are, standing before you, four years later, almost to the day, presenting to you a strategic plan for our local church. The engagement of the people in our pews throughout the strategic planning process has brought forth more than a plan. It has brought a renewed hope in our future as a people of faith throughout the diocese. We gratefully stand before you today to present to you the strategic plans of three commissions: Diocese and Governance, Catholic Social Services, and Youth.
Thank you very much, thank you. This is wonderful, the youth.
Under the umbrella of Diocese and Governance, we had 173 members who represented 63 parishes and four robust planning groups: Administration and Finance, Human Resources, Communication, and Property and Real Estate. Administration and Finance had 48 members representing parishes from Attleboro to Martha's Vineyard. The group's goals, action steps, and timelines call for three things. First, absolute transparency and financial reporting. Number two, dramatic buildup of a technological infrastructure. And number three, allow our priests to be priests. Absolute transparency and financial reporting must continue building on what has already been accomplished at the diocesan level, while providing critical support and oversight for every parish, school, and agency of the diocese. This calls for a dramatic buildup of technological infrastructure with programs, platforms, and networks that do not exist today but are fundamental to protecting and stewarding the resources and gifts that our parishes entrust to us. Administration and Finance planners also recognize the importance of professional staff and talented lay leaders being recruited and trained to serve and support the work of our church that will allow our priests to be priests, winning in the business of saving souls and no longer saddled with the operational, financial, and administrative burdens of managing a parish. Human Resources was a team of 33 parishes plus one pastor who represented parishes from Norton to Mashpee. Their work and their goals were inspired by the words of the Holy Father who said, "A society that seeks the potential of every man and woman will truly breathe deeply, overcome obstacles, draw from an almost inexhaustible human capital, and put each person where they can play their role in God's plan." To that end, the Human Resource Planners identified three key goals to be achieved at both the diocesan as well as the parish, school, and agency level. First, to ensure that we have the right staff talent. We will establish a Human Resource Committee to advise, counsel, and support the bishop and the chancery Human Resources staff to design the best HR organization structure, standardize recruitment and hiring procedures, and develop and update job descriptions that include fair market salary ranges. Number two, we will value, manage, and compensate all employees in a professional, just, and consistent manner, standardizing payroll throughout the diocese, implementing on an online learning management system, and conducting a security audit to ensure our employees work in a safe, secure, and Christian-like environment. We will motivate and celebrate our employees' many gifts by implementing a performance management system. We'll break down silos and teach collaboration through team-building programs, and keep employees informed and updated through a new diocesan internet that will serve as a communication system to connect all employees at our parish schools and agency and diocesan levels. Communications, of which I was very blessed to be a part of, had 37 members representing parishes from Mansfield to Centreville. These planners identified three main goals. Number one, bring people to a closer relationship with Jesus Christ. Number two, unite our parish's schools and ministries around one common vision and mission. And number three, strengthen personal relationships among our clergy, parishes, staff, and those we serve. We will accomplish these goals by living out our rebuilding and faith and hope strategic plan, providing the tools our pastors and parishes need to lead our people closer to Christ, holding themselves accountable to first and foremost from disciples. We will galvanize the bishop's vision of renewal and growth for our diocese in the hearts and minds of our people by strengthening access to and for the bishop in the digital world. His pastoral letters, your pastoral letters, will serve as building blocks for new media initiatives. We will consolidate and integrate all communications functions by bringing together under one roof the Director of Communications, the Anchor Newspaper Staff, and the Digital Media Staff. And an immediate and absolute imperative is the creation and management of one central diocesan database for the dissemination of information to members of Christ's faithful, our employees, clergy, and religious of the diocese, using the US mail, electronic mail, as well as cell and landline phones. Finally, the Property and Real Estate Committee had 41 members representing parishes from Rainham to East Sandwich. These planners identified two important goals: to be good stewards of the buildings and properties that have been gifted to us in order to advance our church's mission across the diocese. We will establish a Property and Real Estate Committee to advise, counsel, and support the bishop and the chancery staff too, determine the staffing and resources that are needed to maintain the newly established database of all buildings and land throughout the diocese, to establish protocols and procedures for adaptive reuse of all sacred spaces, and create and maintain a database of inventory from churches, rectories, and schools that are no longer in use to market or donate on an ongoing basis. The second goal is focused on improving service and support to parishes, schools, and ministries. We will strengthen coordination among diocesan departments, Catholic Social Services, and diocesan healthcare facilities by consolidating these groups under one roof. Learning from those who have gone before us, we will reduce operational costs, improve communications, and foster collaboration and creativity across all departments and ministries, while together we continue to build the kingdom of God here in the dioces-- the dioces-- yes, here. I almost mean it, to the diocese of Fall River, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Let's give this a good round of applause. Thank you very much, thank you. And this is--
The poor are first and foremost persons, and their faces conceal that of Christ Himself. They are His flesh, signs of His crucified body, and we have the duty to reach them even in the most extreme peripheries and in the hidden parts of history with the delicacy and tenderness of Mother Church. Bishop Tocunha, these words from Pope Francis guided our work on the Catholic Social Services Commission. The Catholic Social Services Commission was a team of 132 parishioners from 50 parishes across the diocese. Our planners identified three vital goals that we will be fiercely focused to achieve. Firstly, we will establish a new board of directors with a renewed sense of mission and a clear vision who will help expand opportunities for lay and clergy leadership throughout the diocese. This new board will lead us in, a revision of our governance bylaws, an agency name change that aligns us under the National Umbrella of Catholic Charities USA. Second, we will create a new staff structure that motivates employees to perform at their best and develop the necessary tools to ensure financial transparency and support. This will include immediately addressing workplace culture, employee morale, and compensation. Second, restructuring departments and programs to improve service delivery and strengthen communication and oversight among staff members and management. And building a professional communications and development plan that will inspire great generosity from individuals, families, and organizations who will trust that their gifts to CSS are changing lives and saving lives. Third, our new and expanded services to God's people in need. We'll begin by partnering with St. Vincent Services in response to the increasing need for mental health programs and support throughout the diocese. Implement an awareness campaign around the services and resources that are available through the Catholic Social Services.
Implement an awareness campaign around the services and resources that are available through the Catholic Social Services. Fourth, we're going to connect CSS to our parishes by opening lines of communication and creating responsive solutions, such as establishing parish-based volunteer navigators in each deanery, train volunteers to serve as a resource for individuals at the parish level, directing them to the right services and programs. Fifth, CSS is going to establish itself as a collaborative leader in the larger community. We'll begin by launching a community partnership advisory committee in each deanery and building the needed staffing in order to support that. The work of these groups will help CSS define what a community partner organization is and then help CSS build and sustain these vital partnerships for the long-term health of our agency, our diocese, and our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And then the other one here for the youth.
Commission for Youth. When we change the way we look at things, the things we look at begin to change. Bishop Tukunia, you spoke those words to us when the strategic planning process began back in February, and those words have stayed with us. We are your Commission for Youth. We are a hundred and thirty-six members from forty-five parishes. We have organized our planning around five important areas: faith formation, youth ministry among high-school-aged young people, young adults aged eighteen to thirty-five, family life, and campus ministry. Our goal is to build a culture that effectively catechizes and evangelizes our young people with a goal of lifelong participation in the Catholic faith. To do this, we must first create a new organizational structure at the diocesan level that will create a unified, intentional, and professional approach to evangelization and discipleship. Learning from other dioceses who have gone before us, we will, number one, focus on parents. The National Catholic Directory of Catechesis states, "The Christian family is the first experience of the Christian community, and parents are the primary educators in the faith." Number two, we will create a youth discipleship council made up of parents, youth ministers, DREs, and youth to advise, counsel, and support the bishop to design the best leadership and organizational staff structure at both the diocesan and parish levels, and create programs for parents and young people at the parish level, and pursue a new curriculum based on whole-community catechesis models. Three, reinvigorate Cathedral Camp's facility so that it may be available as a retreat and conference center for the entire diocese and create a permanent office of youth ministry to be located there. Four, create a campus ministry alliance to bridge the gap as our young people transition from high school to college and establish a relationship with the eight college campuses that exist within the boundaries of our diocese. And fifth, build on our success and expand our outreach to adults that will increase participation in our CIA, adult confirmation, and retreat experiences like Crucio, offer more and varied Bible studies and other effective parish-based evangelization programs while continuing annual traditions on the diocesan level, such as the men and women's conferences. Bishop Tukunia, when we change the way we look at things, the things we look at begin to change. We thank you for the invitation to plan together and prayerfully request that you accept these plans that we have presented to you today and ask for your continued guidance and leadership as we stand with you, to read the life into these pages as we continue on this journey together, rebuilding in faith and hope.
Yesterday, I had Mass for the high school in Thornton, for Coian Cassidy High School. And I began my homily to all these students by asking them to complete this very simple and familiar phrase that we all know. So they were all kind of sitting on the edge of their seat to see if they could complete the sentence. And I told them, "I just need two words for you to complete." And I told them, "God helps those who..." See, I knew you'd know that too, because they all did. So think about it for a moment. "God helps those who help themselves." We probably all use that phrase countless times in our lives, and we probably use it without even giving too much reflection to it, but think about what we say. God and us working together. He helps those who work... We can't just sit back and wait for God to resolve all the problems. We can't just sit back and cross our arms and wait for the problems to be resolved. Isn't that what we just heard that we are doing here in the diocese of Fall River? So I wanted to call this our partnership with God. In the Hebrew scriptures, they called it a covenant. God and His people journeying together, working together. And God started with Abraham and told Abraham that he would be His God, and Abraham would be forming this people chosen by God to build this family of humanity in the world honoring, loving, respecting God. And then he repeated that covenant with Moses and with Noah and with David and with the prophets. And God kept telling them, "I am your God, and you will be my people. And we're going to work together, and we're going to journey together, and we're going to stand together, and we're going to suffer together, and we're going to rejoice together, and we're going to be victorious together." And the people sometime listened to, right? Sometime they rebelled, they became impatient. Well, the first reading today tells us that the journey crossing the desert wasn't an easy one, and the people, their patience was worn out, and they began to complain. But then, when they did that, God would remind them again, and they would recognize and rekindle, reconnect their mission, their journey with God. There is an African proverb that you probably also heard. "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." And my dear friends, this is what I would like all of us to embrace here today, that we are in this partnership with God and that we are journeying together. On this journey of challenges, difficulties, sometimes suffering, victories, falling, getting up again, but we are not alone. We are not alone because God is with us, and we're not alone because we have one another on this journey. So today, as we celebrate this milestone in the work that you all have done and put so much effort into it, I would say, "Well done. Thank you for what you've done." But as you all know, the work isn't completed. This is a new beginning. And we embrace this with faith, we embrace this with hope, we embrace this as a family of faith, as a community of faith, as the people of God on this journey. The Bible is filled with stories of journey, some journey that were beautiful, peaceful, most of them were challenging journeys. If you look at my coat of arms that stands above the cathedral in our cathedral, is the bishop's coat of arms, you will see on the bottom right the kind of representing my home country, Brazil. But kind of underneath here, you have, it could be like a river, right, Fall River, but it's really meant to be a difficult path, a little crooked path. The logo for my home state of Bahia, where I come from, says, "Per ardua surgo." "I rise from the difficulties." So I wanted to include that when I became a bishop, because that is kind of the story of my life, rising from the difficulties. All my life, the Lord has been on this journey with me too, rising from the difficulties, from the challenges. The journey is not always easy. Today is an appropriate day for us to remind ourselves of that as we celebrate this feast of this exaltation of the cross. It was through the cross, through suffering, that Christ redeemed us, gave meaning to our lives. And Christ, as St. Paul tells us in that beautiful hymn to the Philippians, "Though he was in the form of God, he did not regard equality with God, something to hold unto." Yes, God the Father asked Jesus, "I have a special mission for you, to go become human and save humanity." And Jesus did not allow His divinity, His equality with God to say, "I can't do that," but He emptied Himself of His divinity and took the form of humanity, even the form of a slave, and humbled Himself to be one of us and accepting death on a cross to save us. There is no easy journey, there is no easy task, there is no easy mission of responsibility. But Christ taught us that when we do the work of God, it does not go without reward. And so God rewarded him for his obedience, for his humility, for his service by raising him up again and exalted him to the heavens where he is seated at the right hand of the Father. And as Jesus was victorious over his cross and suffering, to teach us that difficulties and challenges and arduous path have meaning, that our pain and suffering that we go through in life are not supposed to be meaningless and useless, but they can be moments of grace, of transformation, as we offer them as an oblation, as a gift to God. So my friends, words cannot express today my profound gratitude for the work that you have done and your commitment to be partners with God, with me, with each other, with our diocese on this journey. Words are poor to say that. I hope that you feel in your heart that what you have done and continues doing makes a difference for us, for our church, for our world, for our children and grandchildren and those who will come after us. I hope you feel in your heart that the Lord has been with you on this journey. I hope that you feel in your heart that you are making a huge difference. I hope you feel in your hearts that we are journeying together, that together we go far. And God will always help those who help themselves. God bless all of you. Filled with joy in this celebration, together let us open our hearts and present our petitions to the Father, confident in His loving care for us.
For the work and mission of the Youth and Young Adult Commission, may God bless the work of this commission, give guidance and inspiration to all who participated in the research and discussions to enhance the ministry to our youth and young adults. We pray that they will be open to the new direction that will be given to grow these ministry areas of our diocese. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For our youth and young adults within the diocese, may God bless them with much encouragement to give witness to their faith, to grow in their relationship with God, and to be vibrant workers in the Vineyard as they plant seeds to cultivate a church that is alive, healthy, spirit-filled, and full of truth, to be able to know, love, and serve God always. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For the work and mission of the Governance Commission, may God bless the work of this commission, provide the attention to details and truth to speak what was uncovered in their findings so to enhance the work of the diocese. We pray that all will be open to the new direction that will be given to grow the various ministry areas of our diocese. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For the governance of the diocese, may God grace the diocesan employees with the courage to remain faithful to the mission of rebuilding the diocese in faith and hope. We pray that those who have the responsibility to lead the various departments will do so in faith, hope, and love, so all will respond with grateful hearts to the mission of the church. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For the work and mission of the Catholic Social Services Commission, we pray for the many areas of mission that were identified within the work of this commission. We pray in gratitude for the areas that were uncovered to better assist those in need. We pray that others will come forth to join in the ministry of service to those who... to those who need assistance. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For the workers in the vineyard that minister through Catholic social services, we pray that those entrusted to serve, those needing assistance, will do so with the attitude that Jesus had when he encountered those who reached out for help. We pray that all workers in this field will remain faithful to the demands of the work and respond with caring hearts to all those whom they encounter. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer. God, our Creator, our guardian of our diocese and source of all blessings, you delight in the happiness of your people. Hear the prayers this church offers for the work of the commissions of our diocese. Fulfill our needs and guide our actions toward the building up of your kingdom. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Thank you. Thank you. Blessed are you, O God of all creation, for through your goodness you have received the bread we offer you. Fruit of the earth and the work of him in hands it will become for us the bread of life. Blessed are you, O God of all creation, for through your goodness you have received the wine we offer you. Fruit of divine, the work of him in hands it will become a spiritual drink. But obviously, the sacrifice you offer will make our diocese. It cleans me from all my sins. Pray, my brothers and sisters, that my sacrifice and yours may be acceptable to God the Almighty Father.
May the Lord accept the sacrifice in your hands for the praise and glory of his name. For our word and the good of all is holy church.
May this oblation, O Lord, which on the altar of the cross canceled the offense of the whole world, cleanse us, we pray, of all our sins through Christ our Lord. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
Lift up your hearts.
We lift them up to the Lord.
Let us give thanks to the Lord our God.
It is right and just.
It is truly right and just, our duty and our salvation always and everywhere, to give you thanks, Lord, Holy Father, Mighty and Eternal God. For you placed the salvation of the human race on the wood of the cross so that where death arose, life might again spring forth. And the evil one who conquered on a tree might likewise on a tree be conquered through Christ our Lord. Through him the angels praise your majesty. Dominions adore and powers tremble before you. Heaven and the virtues of heaven and the blessed seraphine worship together with exaltation. May our voices, we pray, join with theirs in humble praise as we acclaim. You are indeed holy, O Lord, and all you have created rightly gives you praise. For through your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, by the power and working of the Holy Spirit, you give life to all things and make them holy, and you never cease to gather a people to yourself so that from the rising of the sun to its setting, a pure sacrifice may be offered to your name. Therefore, O Lord, we humbly implore you, by the same spirit graciously make holy these gifts we have brought to you for consecration, that they may become the body and the blood of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, at whose command we celebrate these mysteries. For on the night he was betrayed, he himself took bread. And giving you thanks, he said the blessing, broke the bread, and gave it to his disciples, saying, "Take this, all of you, and eat of it; for this is my body, which will be given up for you." In a similar way, when supper was ended, he took the chalice and giving you thanks, he said the blessing and gave the chalice to his disciples, saying, "Take this, all of you, and drink from it; for this is the chalice of my blood, the blood of the new and eternal covenant, which will be poured out for you and for many for the forgiveness of sins. Do this in memory of me." The mystery of faith. This cup we proclaim your death, O Lord, until you come again. Therefore, O Lord, as we celebrate the memorial of the saving passion of your Son, his wondrous resurrection and ascension into heaven, and as we look forward to his second coming, we offer you in thanksgiving this holy and living sacrifice. Look, we pray, upon the oblation of your church and recognizing the sacrificial victim by whose death you will to reconcile us to yourself, grant that we who are nourished by the body and blood of your Son and filled with his Holy Spirit may become one body, one spirit in Christ.
May he make of us an eternal offering to you so that we may obtain an inheritance with your elect, especially with the most blessed Virgin Mary, mother of God, blessed Joseph, her spouse, with your blessed apostles and glorious martyrs, and with all the saints on his constant intercession in your presence, we rely for unfailing help.
May this sacrifice of our reconciliation, we pray, O Lord, advance the peace and salvation of all the world. Be pleased to confirm in faith and charity your pilgrim church on earth with your servant Francis our Pope and Edgar our bishop, the Order of Bishops and all the clergy and the entire people you have gained for your own. Listen graciously to the prayers of this family whom you have summoned before you. In your compassionate, merciful Father, gather to yourself all your children, scattered throughout the world.
To our departed brothers and sisters and to all who were pleasing to you at their passing from this life, give kind admittance to your kingdom. There we hope to enjoy forever the fullness of your glory through Christ our Lord, through whom you bestow on the world all that is good.
Through him and with him and in him, O God, the mighty Father, in the unity of the Holy Spirit, all glory and honor is yours forever and ever. At the Savior's command and formed by divine teaching, we dare to say, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Deliver us, Lord, we pray, from every evil. Graciously grant peace in our days that by the help of your mercy we may be always free from sin and safe from all distress as we await the blessed hope and the coming of our Savior, Jesus Christ."
For the kingdom, the power, and the glory are yours now and forever.
Lord Jesus Christ, who said to your apostles, "Peace I leave you, my peace I give you. Look not on our sins, but on the faith of your church, and graciously grant her peace and unity in accordance with your will, who live and reign forever and ever." My brothers and sisters, may the peace of the Lord be with you always.
And with your spirit. Let us offer each other the sign of peace.
Peace, Bishop.
Peace, Bishop. Thank you.
Peace be with you, John.
Peace be with you. Nice, John.
Thank you.
Peace be with you, Bruce.
Peace be with you.
Peace be with you.
Peace, Jim.
Peace.
Peace, Bishop.
Peace be with you, John.
Peace be with you.
Peace, John.
Take away the sins of the world. Have mercy on us. Lamb of God, you take away the sins of the world. Have mercy on us. Take away the sins of the world. Grant us peace. Behold the Lamb of God. Behold him who takes away the sins of the world. Blessed are those called to the supper of the Lamb. Lord, I am not worthy that you should enter under my roof, but only say the word and my soul shall be healed.
And we celebrate for you are with us here. And we believe that we will see you when you come.
and we celebrate for you are with us here; and we believe that we will see you when you come; in your glory, Lord, we remember; we celebrate; we believe. Christ the Father's great reward to all the hopes and dreams of every heart; peace beyond all telling and freedom from all fear; we remember how you loved us to your death; and we celebrate for you are with us here; and we believe that we will see you when you come; in your glory, Lord, we remember; we celebrate; we believe. See the face of Christ with you in every person standing by your side; kiss to one another in temples of your love; and we believe that we will see you when you come; in your glory, Lord, we remember; we celebrate; we believe. Let us pray. Having been nourished by your holy banquet, we beseech you, Lord Jesus Christ, to bring those you have redeemed by the wood of your life-giving cross to the glory of the resurrection, who lives and reigns forever and ever.
Amen.
Please be seated for a moment.
The diocesan pastoral council is charged with advising on and implementing the strategic plans that we presented today. We are pleased to introduce the newly appointed council and ask that they each come forward for their formal commissioning and blessing by Bishop de Cunha. Mary Anne DeChambeau, Michael Murphy, Michael Phillips, James Riley, Charles Feeney, Joseph O'Keefe, Richard Grace, Dionizio DiCosta, David Rose, Joe Booth, Christopher Fortier, Berta Herrera, Michael Murray, Virginia Jakes, Peter Marshall, Joseph Solacito, Deacon Peter Gurrish, Father Matthew Gill, Father John Ozog, Father Richard Wilson, and Father John Murray.
First of all, I want to say again thank you for accepting this additional responsibility from all the things that you have already done; but as you heard today and as we've been saying, we can't do this without the help and support of generous, talented people like you. And I would like you to see this as God calling you to be a part of this partnership, of this mission of rebuilding our diocese. So thank you for saying yes. Our help is in the name of the Lord who made heaven and earth. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
Lord, we ask your blessing upon this matter, that all those who use them may see in them the art of sin, of your grace, of your love; they be reminded of their call to serve in our church, in our diocese, to serve your people with generosity, faith, and hope. And we ask your blessing upon this matter and those who are going to wear them in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you for saying yes. 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 Peter, thank you for saying yes. Thank you for saying yes. Thank you, David, for saying yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for saying yes. Thank you very much for saying yes. Thank you very much for saying yes. Thank you, Brenda, for saying yes. Thank you, John, for saying yes. Thank you, Richard, for saying yes. Wait. We do this? Oh, yeah, you. Thank you, thank you. With this simple gesture and prayer and blessing, I therefore commission you to be members of the Diocesan Pastoral Council to help me, to help our diocese, implement the recommendations of our strategic planning to advise and help us make the decisions for the future of our diocese; and so I ask God's blessing upon each of you. Ever living God, you gather us together as the diocese of all river to carry the gospel of Christ to all people. Bless these members of our Diocesan Pastoral Council. Let your spirit enlighten their minds and guide all their actions, that they may be renewed in faith, united in love, and bring to fulfillment the work of your church to your greater honor and glory. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
God bless you. As we now come to the conclusion of our celebration here this morning, I want to thank everyone involved in also planning this liturgy. I want to thank all the priests for being here today, the deacons, the servers, Michael for the music, the lecturers, and everyone involved in the liturgy, those who have presented the recommendation from the commissions. I want to thank everyone who made this a prayerful moment for all of us, to Laura Carrillo, our Director of Strategic Planning, and all the staff and everyone involved that took a lot of work. Marilyn, who's been with us for so long time, she couldn't be here today. I hope she should be able to see some of it on Facebook or our webpage or something, because I think she would be very happy and proud to see all that we did here today, and she was so much part of it too. So thank you all, and our celebration will continue at the whites with others just coming together to really rejoice and celebrate with each other. So please stand for the final blessing. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
Our help is in the name of the Lord.
May heaven and earth.
Blessed be the name of the Lord.
Now and forever.
And may the blessing of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit come down upon all of you and remain with you forever.
Amen.
Let us go in peace, glorifying the Lord by our lives.
Thanks be to God.
Our closing song is located in your program, "Our Call."
In the light, shine the love of your Lord; we are called to be light to the people and the son of the children of God; we are called, called to act justice; we are called to love and to lean;
we are called.
To serve one another, to walk humbly with God. Come, hold me your hand; show your mercy to all those who fear; we are called to heal all the world; we are called to be true and righteous; we no more.